Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lord and Alderman Dukniak are excused. Alderman Tillman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Darcy, would you start us off?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
If everybody would please take a look at the minutes of August 20th. If there are no omissions, questions, corrections, comments, motion, please. Kurkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2019. Guzekowski, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item number four is a recognition and it's a mayoral proclamation to de-clean Truck and Refrigerations, celebrating their 50th anniversary here in Oak Creek. Catherine, when you're ready, would you read that into the record, please?
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, congratulations to de-clean Truck Refrigeration and Trailer Sales, Inc., in recognition of their 50th anniversary. Whereas in 1969, Don and Dory Deklean founded their family, owned and operated business as a fleet operator for Bulk Transport Company, which transported petroleum products to northeast Wisconsin. And whereas, as part of the Bulk Transport Company, they proudly serviced their own equipment and began repair work for other businesses. And whereas, in 1980, after recognizing growth potential, shifted their focus from transport services to repair work. And whereas, in 1984, they were awarded the Carrier Transit Hole Dealership for the Truck Trailer Refrigeration product line, serving central and northeast Wisconsin and most of the upper peninsula of Michigan. And whereas, recognizing a need to expand, customer built their current 13,000 square foot facility in DePere, Wisconsin, and moved in February of 1994. And whereas, in 1999, were awarded their Carrier Transit Hole Dealership for the Madison, Wisconsin area, leading to construction of a new facility into Forest, Wisconsin in fall of 2001. And whereas, in 2007, de-clean Truck Refrigeration and Trailer Sales, Inc., was awarded the Carrier Transit Hole Dealership for the Milwaukee area currently located in Oak Creek. And whereas, continuing to focus on customer service, DTR opened a fourth facility in Sparta, Wisconsin in 2012, and a fifth facility in Pullover, Wisconsin in 2015. And whereas, throughout their years, DTR has added many product lines pertaining to the transportation industry, including Trail Clean, Talbert, and Dorsey and Stotin trailers. And whereas, in their 50 years of business, DTR has earned numerous awards, including earning Dealer of the Year awards, in 2002 and 2008, a most sought-after and prestigious award among Carrier Transit Hole Dealers throughout the United States, Canada, and Mexico. And whereas, in August of 2019, de-clean Truck Refrigeration and Trailer Sales, Inc., will celebrate their 50th anniversary. And whereas, the city of Oak Creek and its citizens have benefited tremendously from the valuable contribution of de-clean Truck Refrigeration and Trail Sales, Inc. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, hereby congratulate de-clean Truck Refrigeration and Trailer Sales, Inc., on their 50th anniversary.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody have any words for Deklean? Anybody? Chris?
Well, Mayor, it's great to see you there. What a fascinating business when you look into it and you brought up some good points and suggestions, and I hope they take them up on your idea with the sneak peek for Oak Creek. But it was a great event that they had, and just to take a look around and see just all the different partnerships that they have made through the years, it's really kind of inspiring. You look at what are they going to do in the next 50 years? Thanks to them.
Very much so. Me and Chris went out to their 50th anniversary celebration last week. They had us out, they had their customers in. It is a neat business right here in Oak Creek. So if you ever wondered how your food gets to the restaurants or grocery stores refrigerated, fresh, and ready to be consumed, you can thank Deklean for it. And they've been right here in Oak Creek, family-run business, close to 70 employees. And again, they're looking for people to train into this business, so very well-kept secret here. So congratulations to them on their 50th. If we could, get a motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, I'll move to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayoral proclamation.
Oh, it's a mayoral proclamation. Okay. Well, again, congratulations to Deklean. And again, hopefully if they take part in a sneak peek, you will visit them and see what they're doing there down in South Branch. All right. Gets us to item five, and it's consideration of a rezone by General Capital Group for the properties at 1001, 1199, and 1203 West Ryan Road, 9600 South 13th. Catherine, you want to read that in?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Linda Goran's Levy General Capital Group to rezon the properties at 1001, 1199, and 1203 West Ryan Road, and 9600 South 13th Street North of the creek to B4 Highway Business. No change to FW Floodway or FF Flood Fringe Districts. Applicant is Linda Goran's Levy General Capital Group. Property owner is Ryan Business Park, LLC. Legal description there follows, and the date of notice is July 31st, 2019.
Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the Stevo Creek. And this is a public hearing on a request to rezon portions of the properties at 1001, 1199, 1203 West Ryan Road, and 9600 South 13th Street to B4 Highway Business. These lands are, I hesitate to call them remnants, but they're part of the Ryan Business Park. And as part of the recent comprehensive plan change that the council approved based on the Plan Commission's input in public hearing, changed this whole area for the business park and allowed for both a mix of industrial and commercial uses. The applicant has indicated that the area north of the South Branch of Oak Creek, so there's a creek obviously that runs, splits these properties, the area north of the creek is best suited for commercial. The comprehensive plan amendment also concurred with that and changed that to a planned business designation. This rezoning follows up on the heels of that comprehensive plan and changes the zoning of the properties north of the South Branch of Oak Creek to B4 Highway Business. The one thing you'll note on the map is that the plan shows whole properties there, and part of the property includes what will be the right-of-way for Bartel Court. You can kind of see that in the lower right-hand corner of the subject properties. That portion of the property would not be included as part of the rezoning. It would only be the area north of the creek. With that being said, this is a public hearing. Anyone with any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning to B4 Highway Business, please fill out an appearance form. Once your name is called, please approach the podium, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions and or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, we'll make three calls. This will be the first. Second call. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, name and address. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item six, which is consideration of that ordinance we just spoke of. Questions, comments from the council? Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a corner of my district, but I have not received any feedback or questions or commentary from anybody in the district. And just noting, I think it's a logical housekeeping move for that particular corner, for that particular property. Mike and Linda. I'm concerned, yeah. Smart move, logical.
Hey, Mike, would you like to say something?
No, I just wanted to make myself available for any questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Steve?
Access.
Okay. Yep, it was the same conclusion at the planning, so I think Ken summed it up well. Motion, please.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number 2949 to approve a rezon of the properties at 1001, 1199, and 1203 West Ryan Road, and 9600 South 13th Street, north of the creek from A1 Limited Agriculture, B4 Highway Business, M1 Manufacturing, to B4 Highway Business.
Guzekowski, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item seven is consideration of an ordinance to recreate a section of our municipal code regarding coal tar sealant products. Darcy?
Darcy DuBois, Health Officer, Oak Creek. Tonight, we're requesting that the council consider adopting an ordinance to prohibit the use of coal tar sealants and other pavement sealants that contain high levels of polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which we usually call PAHs. These are the sealants that can be used to protect driveways and parking lots. You may recall that there was a presentation in April of 2018 by Clean Wisconsin regarding this topic, where they provided some background information and talked about what they were asking, what they were looking for supporting communities in these ordinances. There are alternatives to these sealants on the market that would include asphalt-based pavements and sealants, as well as acrylic sealants. And many of those products, or some of those products, are really comparable in price to the coal tar sealants, so it should, cost hopefully would not be a deterring factor. People can find other products available. The Board of Health has also looked into this issue, have received the presentation from Clean Wisconsin, and they are in support of the ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Questions for Darcy?
Here. Alderman Kurkowski, first district.
Yes, go ahead. Darcy, what would be the additional cost for a contractor to abide by this ordinance versus what we have now? So how much added cost would it be?
Yeah, I'm certainly not an expert in that. My understanding is that there are comparable products, the asphalt-based pavement sealants are comparable products that would not increase the cost by much, if at all.
I see Mike Simmons nodding his head. Can you add anything, please?
Yes, I made some calls as this item was getting closer to being before the council. And I talked with one contractor that does a lot of work in the area on commercial sealing of parking lots, repair and sealing of parking lots. And they were not real concerned that the city was considering this action. They do have a variety of products. So basically, their response was, if we can't use them in Oak Creek, we can't use them in Oak Creek. We have other products to use.
Thank you.
Many of the surrounding communities in the area have already passed such an ordinance, so I wouldn't expect that a lot of the contractors in the area are already familiar with the alternative products that are available.
I think you're correct, Darcy. At the ICC meeting, I think we were one of the remaining communities that just haven't adopted this. Came through in spring, and we just had a host of things going on. So we put it back to health to reconsider it and investigate it. I'm actually the one that said, let's bring it back around now, as long as we're getting our municipal code back up to code.
The other mayors have anything to say about how they're doing in terms of retailers or anything like that?
No, no. As Darcy said, there's comparable products out there. And again, it's a step in the right direction environmentally. It's just a step in the right direction because there's alternative products out there that don't use that. Go ahead, Ken.
Darcy, any kind of awareness program, or how do you guys intend to drive knowledge of this?
Yeah, definitely. So I think that we would plan on reaching out to contractors in the area, as well as retailers, making them aware of the new ordinance. And then we would also use things like the Acorn or social media to get the message out to residents and businesses and things like that.
Else?
Me.
Seeing none, motion on seven. Kurkowski make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2948 to create Section 6.30 of the municipal code regarding coal tar sealant products.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Next item is informational, and it's our summarized treasures report for the month of July. Welcome, Barb.
Thank you, Mayor. So these are the investment and banking account, month ending July 31st, 2019. Beginning balance was $43,314,288. Ending balance, $48,154,683.51. We had interest earned of $90,171.34. And the increase, there was an increase between beginning and ending balance of $4,840,395.3. The activity for July that makes up that increase, we had tax collection of just over $168,000. We did receive our shared, our final shared revenue, final, right, Bridgette? Oh, November, sorry, final, sorry. We did receive some shared revenue, $6,481,000. Our first dollar credit, $571,226. And exempt computer aid of $184,149.
Okay, questions for Barb? I just got one, the shared revenue, Barb, that's bumped in quarterly, is it three times a year, four times a year?
Is it quarterly, Bridgette?
It is not quarterly, it is three times a year.
And that's everything else too, or is the computer aid a one-time thing? Hit you at mid-year?
The computer aid, I believe, is one time.
It's one time. And then the first dollar credit is one time a year as well.
Okay, just curious, educating. Any other questions for Barb? Okay, thank you, Barb. Moving on, item nine, consideration of a motion to concur with celebrations to designate Sunday, the 27th, from 4:00 to 6:00 to be the official Oak Creek trick-or-treat. Questions, comments from the council? That is a Sunday, I believe? Popular day of choice. Mayor? Yes.
Just for the record, I remember one year we tried to do it on the night, it just didn't work out. So I think that's why we went back to the Sunday, because...
I think you're correct, Steve. It wasn't as popular as the tradition of doing it on Halloween, so. There's no further discussion. Motion.
Kurkowski make a motion to concur with the celebrations commission and designate Sunday, October 27th, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. as the official City of Oak Creek trick-or-treat. Gail, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
And item 10 in community development, it's consideration of a resolution expressing the support for maintenance of the Milwaukee County Transit System service to Oak Creek. Doug, you had it, or Andrew?
Yeah, I can set the stage for that. I mean, Oak Creek is currently served by all our parts of four different bus routes. I mean, the most notable one that you see driving through Drexel Town Square, that's Route 80. Route 40 is the Freeway Flyer service from College Avenue. Just to note about that, it used to obviously stop at Ryan Road. State did a beautiful job of reconstructing the parking ride, parking ride lot at Ryan Road. The county has no plans even before the proposed budget cuts of serving the Ryan Road parking ride. So that was kind of an interesting study in bureaucracy, rebuilding a parking lot that no one's going to be using. But those personal notes aside, Route 219 is a shuttle service, AMPM Peak, that serves the North Branch Industrial Park. What I'm missing, oh, the purple line is the express service along 27th Street, a recently, recent addition to serve the IKEA development. As part of the ongoing challenges with Milwaukee County and meeting the fiscal needs and the pretty significant budget restrictions, the transit service has evaluated its route structure and finds that the current level of service is not sustainable. And in fact, after some study has advocated or proposed limiting or reducing many routes, not only in Oak Creek, with the goal of kind of focusing on their main customers, and in fact, the thing that I've seen in analysis, that 97% of their core customers would be unaffected by the proposed changes. Nonetheless, the changes to Oak Creek are pretty drastic. They include the elimination of Freeway Flyer service, the elimination of Route 219, the North Branch Shuttle Service, and the elimination of Route 80 service south of MATC. So the investment that was made in terms of the bus stops at Drexel Town Square and Point South would not be served under the current proposal. And that's, it's a proposal at this point in time, but it's important to note that in transit, and you see it in your strategic plan, and in addition to a lot of the regional development plans, I mean, transit is just not a way to get from point A to point B. It supports a lot of things. It supports workforce development. In our business retention and expansion visits, almost universally, we see that workforce, attracting and maintaining a workforce is a significant challenge. And in many of those cases, there is a segment of that workforce that relies on public transit to, or a reliable means of transportation to access those jobs. And the elimination of essentially all transit service to Oak Creek, with the exception of the purple line, is it going to be a really real challenge for that segment of the population that relies on that? And it'll be a real challenge for those employers who rely on that segment of population. So that being said, as Milwaukee County deliberates its budget, and there's some tough choices to make, no question. We, as a staff, as an administration, really want to focus the discussion, and our discussion with them, on the workforce transit connection and how that really contributes to a very strong regional economy. You see a lot of the growth taking place on the south side of Milwaukee County, Oak Creek, Franklin. And to essentially restrict or deny access to those jobs to a significant portion of the population will just make it a real challenge for both employees and employers to meet their needs in the next few years. So with that in mind, we have put out to our BRE customers the notice of the proposed cuts. We also sent a letter to each of the businesses along the route advising them of the upcoming changes, proposed changes, and letting them know how they can comment as part of the proposed Milwaukee County budget. However, I think it's important that we, as a community, speak to the integral connection between transit and workforce development and economic goals as espoused in our strategic plan. That's why we prepared a resolution for the council to consider, which advocates for public transit and consideration for retaining the public transit routes in Oak Creek.
Thank you, Doug. Well said. Andrew?
That was well said, Doug. And just to add to that, I think what keeps coming back in my mind is, Doug cited it, 97% of the customer base will remain unchanged. That means we're in the 3% in terms of ridership. For me, the message is prematurity. I think that, as you've espoused as a council for this community and your strategic plan, and I think Doug cited it in here, we talk a lot about multimodal, talk a lot about transit options and rapid transit options. I just feel that, probably goes without saying, you can't be a community of tomorrow without those types of opportunities in your city or your village. So for me, it's prematurity. We've heard, as Doug mentioned on our BRE visits, you know, North Branch relies on this to a degree, but Drexel Town Square, discontinuing Route 80 south of MATC, Drexel Town Square isn't even built out. And we made some level of investment. The county transit system thought it wise to extend service into this area, and we haven't fully built out the development that they based that decision on. You know, there's going to be 500 more folks living in the next building over when that's fully built. And, you know, a good number of them will appreciate, if not rely on transit in this area for work, recreation, whatever the case may be. So as we kind of tune this up with the county over the next month, through their budget deliberations, I don't want to, I don't want to have any regrets on the effort that we put forward. I know, you know, these budget proposals, you know, seems the county and other big governments seem to throw a lot out there and try to get reactions from people, and then in the end, it's all okay, and it was kind of like, oh, we're just kidding, just wanted to get some, you know, just wanted to get some opinions out there on this certain thing, or maybe it's focusing attention on one thing versus another in terms of big policy items. But, you know, whatever we can do moving forward, whatever the council can do, I know Dan, Mayor Dan and Doug are going to have a plan of attack for how, you know, this gets distributed and who they talk to and those types of things to really, I guess in essence, lobby on the banner of, you know, our businesses currently rely on it, but specifically for 80, Route 80, it's just really premature, and we want to put a couple more years behind us and fully build out this development before you judge the ridership or usership of the transit system, because that's a value judgment they're making. They're saying that, you know, that there's not a lot of value placed on it among these folks, because we see that, because there's not as much ridership as elsewhere, but they very well could be. And we're not going to get this back anytime soon if it goes away. That's really critical to express to you as well. So if you have any ideas, if you feel strongly about it, let us know as we are talking with folks over the next month.
I think that's a great point. Any up-and-coming city does have transit, they check that box that that's available to them. We are a rapidly growing city. We need to keep that here, that service here, regardless of what the ridership is right now. It will continue to grow as we build out and be used. So again, we will be contacting our county supervisors, county executives, our state legislators, and so on and so forth. But as Andrew said, it could also just be one of these, well, we're going to take this away. The county has some issues going on with shared revenue that we spoke about earlier. So we'll see where it goes, but we will attend to meetings and we'll do what we can to preserve that service here in Oak Creek. Any other questions, comments? Particularly the 80s serving MATC, I'm just going to do a plug for MATC. A lot of people there are in the early stages of their careers, they don't have that transportation, they're getting themselves into a tech school to get themselves a one- or two-year degree, a jump on their careers, whether it be fire, police, welding, you name it. It's essential for the South Campus to be served too. So we've been in touch with MATC, and they'll be working with us too. Chris?
Mayor, when I thought, when I heard this first come in about and talked about it in the news, I thought, I almost thought it was a joke. I was like, I can't believe that they're really going to consider doing that, because honestly, I mean, when you look at all of the services here that we're dependent on, this is just really a hit, it hurts big time, I think. So I support whatever efforts you guys make to try to retain.
Out and there, more and more pushing for mass transit, carpooling and things of that nature. Take it away. Motion on 10, please.
I'll move to approve Resolution 12091-09031 on expressing support for maintenance of Milwaukee County Transit Service to Oak Creek.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And item 11 is licensing. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kurkowski. Thank you, Mayor. I assume everybody's had an opportunity to read the License Committee report. And if nobody, does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, Kurkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the September 3rd, 2019 License Committee Report.
Gail, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Tillman.
And item 12 is our vendor summary report for August. Any questions? Please direct it to the front table. There are no other questions? Motion on 12.
I'll move to approve the August 28th, 2019 Vendor Summary Report in the amount of
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And just before we adjourn, I want to thank staff for coming out tonight. Very quick meeting, and I know it takes up your time, but necessary to be here. Mike, would you like to recap the big lines fest that went on this weekend?
We put up some awesome numbers. Thank you to the public for coming out and record numbers. It was incredible. We have gross numbers right now, which exceeded by probably 25% of our record year already. We don't have any net figures yet, but it was incredible this year. Mother Nature was a big part of that. Mother Nature was a big part of that with the weather, so...
Very good. Congratulations to you, all the Lions, a great civic partner at the City of Oak Creek. Look for good things to do with all that money you made this week.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, Steve?
Well, I just want to probably say either a job well done or congratulations to our city administrator. You already know this, Mayor, but a flight down to Florida, or Houston, I ran in, right behind me, Bo Bernhoff, who was Andrew's intern. He is now the city administrator up in Sister Bay, youngest city administrator in the state, so...
I guess who he knocked off for that throne?
You?
It was about 12 years ago.
Oh, who?
Yeah.
Who? You were the answer.
He was one year and a half younger than I.
He said he reaches out to Andrew for answers to some questions, so it's nice that he's doing that.
Who goes to you for not holding him back just to keep the record? With that, Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Gisekowsky, second.
Got it? Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.